Welcome to the Wednesday, December 15th, 2021, meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session since 5:01 this evening. Can I have a motion, please, to re-enter the public meeting? I move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a lot going on here tonight, but we have a wonderful, a wonderful opening to our meeting. Right, so at this time, I'd like to introduce our high school principal, Andrew Corsiglia, who will introduce our madrigals. Andrew?
Yeah, thank you, good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce our madrigal choir under the direction of Dr. Doug Coats. Dr. Coats has joined Greeley this year. It's his first year at Greeley, but he's coming to us from North Salem with a whole lot of talent and expertise, and we're thrilled to have him part of the team, part of our school, supporting our students and supporting all of our vocalists. We are in the middle, or actually, past the middle, I think, right now, of our winter concert series, and it's just fabulous this year to be able to be hosting our winter concert series in person at the school. And we have a chorus concert tomorrow night at 7 o'clock, and that's going to be fantastic. And so, our madrigals are here, and it's wonderful to continue this tradition or pick it back up with our magical singing for the board, which we've done in the past, and it's just awesome to be here. So I don't want to say anything more, I just want to turn it over to Dr. Coats and our magical chorus and here, magical choir, and you don't even need the microphone. Here we go, alright, thank you.[109.22][109.22][applause] So we have about three-quarters of our madrigals here tonight. There have been some people had other commitments and things, but I would like you to meet the madrigals that are here tonight, and I'm going to let them tell you who they are and what grade they're in. Let's start with you, Brooke. No, no.
I'm Barbara Hall, and I'm a senior in Greeley. I've been in chorus for four years, and this is my second year in magical choir.
I'm a limp, I'm a sophomore in Greeley, and this is my first year in magical choir.
I'm Carolyn Sher, I'm a freshman at Greeley. This is my first year in magical choir.
I'm Elizabeth Fallon, I'm a junior at Greeley, and this is my first year.
I'm Jolteanita, I'm a junior here at Greeley, and this is my third year in magical choir.
I'm Matthew Weisler, I'm a freshman, this is my first year in magical choir.
I'm Martin Goldil, I'm a junior, and this is my first year in magical choir.
I'm Aiden Winter, and this is my second year in magical choir, and I am a sophomore.[360.00][360.00][applause]
Great, we're going to close out with an actual song actually called "A Very Merry Madrigal", to be sung by the madrigals.
[singing] Have yourself a merry little Christmas. Let your heart be light. From now on, our troubles will be out of sight. Our troubles will be out of sight. Here we are as the golden days, happy golden days of yore. We come round to our friends, gather 'round, near to us once more. Through the years, we all will be together, give the fates a whirl. In a shining star upon the highest bough. And have yourself a merry little Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas.[484.81][484.81][applause]
Thank you so much, Dr. Coats, and thank you to our high school madrigals. Can we get that one more round of applause? Thank you so much. And now I'd like to transition to our athletic program and invite our athletic director, Mr. Jeffrey Curtis, up to the stage to introduce our swim and diving champions.
Thank you, Dr. Ackerman, it'll be my pleasure. Good evening, town of Chappaqua, good evening, Board of Ed members. My name is Jeff Curtis, I'm the new and very proud athletic director of the Chappaqua Central Schools. Oh, I forgot, swimmers, come on down. Exit stage right, come on down, and you can follow right over here. While they're moving, I will continue. So thanks to our Board of Ed for hosting an exceptional group of student athletes. I know our coaches, our swimmers, our divers are all very excited to be here. So thanks to Dr. Ackerman and Andrew Corsiglia, who accompanied the team up to Ithaca, and also the rest of the admin team, and thanks to the Board of Ed members, Hillary Warren, Kaylee Jane, and Victoria. We are all excited to be here tonight. So as you know, these young student athletes over here are New York State Swim and Dive State Champions.[574.03][574.03][applause] So I thought perhaps that I would start by telling you some of the things that have happened recently to and for them. Last night, they were honored at the town council meeting, where it was proclaimed that December 16th, tomorrow, so that makes this their eve, was their day. 2021 Horace Greeley G Swim and Dive Day in Newcastle. Coach Meg has the actual proclamation. Additionally, last night, the team members were each given a key to the city. And now tonight, we are here to honor them as a school district and as a Board of Education, to recognize their efforts, their teamwork, and their excellence. The day they returned from Ithaca, the first day at school as state champions, the following announcement was read over the public address at Horace Greeley High School by Mr. Andrew Corsiglia. The 200 medley relay team of Zoe Chung, Kiara Setchak, Sabrina Johnston, and Emma Zhu finished third overall. Emma Zhu finished third overall in the 100-yard freestyle. Sabrina Johnston was the state champ in both the 50 freestyle and the 100 backstroke, earning Horace Greeley records and automatic All-American times in both of those events. She also set a new 100-yard freestyle record with another automatic All-American time that Friday. The team of Emma Zhu, Kelly Byrne, Maddie Adams-Miller, and Sabrina Johnston were the state champs, as they combined for a new Horace Greeley High School record and an automatic All-American time in the 400 freestyle relay. Emma Zhu, Maddie Adams-Miller, and Sabrina Johnston were named New York State Scholar-Athletes, while Sabrina Johnston won the overall New York State Swim Official Scholarship, which I don't need to tell you, is quite an honor.[688.15][688.15][applause] All of that, that I just read, adds up to a group of state champions right here. First overall in New York State, congratulations to all for an incredible season and incredible performance. State championships don't happen often, but one just did, and it's yours. Great job. Thank you for sharing that state championship in a small way with us this evening. Without further ado, the Board of Ed would like to call each athlete up, present them with a medal, and a very highly sought-after winter hat. Congratulations to the 10 student athletes who represented Horace Greeley at the New York State Swim and Dive Championships at Ithaca College this past weekend. First up are coaches, Meg Kaplan. Coach Meg here yet? Oh, and Coach Jeannie Callahan, who is on her way down. We'll keep rolling. Next up are divers, Sarah Agdern and Michelle Casilka. Stay up here, swimming divers, we'll do a picture at the end. Next up are swimmers, in no particular order, Sabrina Johnston, Emma Zhu, Grace Nadecki, Kelly Byrne, Zoe Chung, Ellie Slive, Maddie Adams-Miller, and Kiara Setchak. Next up, okay, we're going to do a quick pic, so after everyone gets their swag, we will line up across the front.
Okay, Mr. Corsiglia, can you come up with Mr. Curtis, take a picture, and then maybe the Board of Education can come up here too, since you're honoring the swim team tonight?
Yeah.
Right? I have to tell you, the only people that have that hat are the admin team and the Board of Education, and now the girls' swimming and diving champions![828.65][828.65][applause]
Once again, thanks, everybody, thanks Board of Ed, thanks admin team. Lastly, student athletes, we're going to meet up in the blue room. We have a special surprise, we're going to show you something, and that will take place right now. Thanks, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis, thank you to our swim team and diving team, and thank you, parents, for joining us. We're going to do a quick transition as we invite up Seven Bridges. We just need to get our screen set. Dr. Mazza, if you can come on up with everyone who's presenting with you for the first portion of the Seven Bridges presentation. At some point, the Board of Education is going to head up to the Seven Bridges studio, but we will be live streaming from up there for the audience. We can't fit everyone in that space due to COVID, so if you could just be patient with us, we would appreciate it. Okay. And then, David Lees, can you pull up Joe's presentation, please? Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Mazza, our principal of Seven Bridges Middle School. We are in the middle of presenting all of our schools to the Board of Education and highlighting particular programs in each of them. We've completed the elementary circuit, so we're moving into our middle school circuit, and Seven Bridges is first. So, Dr. Mazza, you are on, please introduce your team, and we will get right into the presentation.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Ackerman, and welcome, everyone. It's great to see everyone in person here tonight. I'd like to introduce to you two of our rising stars here. They do a lot outside of the studio, but Zoya Nabil and Olivia Reagan that are here. And those of you out in the crowd that have watched our morning news, know them as Zoya's Kitchen and Trivia Tuesday Olivia. And we're going to tell you a little bit about the studio, and then we're going to take you for a tour. And, you know, we won't forget to say thank you to CSF, because without CSF, this wouldn't be possible. So, what does it mean to be literate in the 21st century? When we think about the things that are really important through grades five, six, seven, and eight, we're reading, we're writing, we're listening, we're speaking, we're blending words. Go to the next slide, please. Images, videos, sounds, and tell a powerful story. We select modes of communication, whether that be podcasts, video, blogs. You know, since we've gotten recent grants, we've done a lot more podcasting across the building, and now video is playing a role throughout the building, starting with the morning news, but going through curricular areas. Students also consume and artfully produce compelling and powerful multimedia communications. And if you go to the next slide, we're going to tell you a little bit about our journey at Seven Bridges, and I'm going to pass the mic to Mr. Seraphin, and then he'll continue to pass it to the students.
Thanks very much, Dr. Mazza, good evening, everyone. I was here in 2003 when Seven Bridges first opened, in which building-wide communication and public announcements were done through a Cisco PA system. To this day, one can punch a code onto any phone in the building, and it's possible to be heard on the building-wide public address system. Our morning announcements were done like this daily for years, with a group of five to eight students involved in a group called "The Morning Crew". When Dr. Mazza came to Seven Bridges, he clearly had a background in TV production, media communications, and he shared about how he had started a TV studio in a previous school, and how creatively engaging it was for students. We made plans to write a CSF grant, and we also took the action step of going on a field trip to ABC Studios in Manhattan, where students and teachers experienced a real TV studio with a real newsroom in action, complete with technicians, directors, news anchors, and a studio representative who provided a wealth of knowledge about what it meant to be involved in media. This trip provided us with information, inspiration, and the motivation to write the grant for the studio that we are grateful to have today. Interestingly enough, Dr. Mazza's leadership during COVID actually helped us make the quantum leap to streaming on a live media platform called StreamYard through a YouTube channel. One day, we were speaking on a phone receiver, and literally overnight, we were streaming live on video. As I watched that first broadcast with Dr. Mazza and Dr. Nova, I realized that in a crisis, leadership was present, they were in communication, and a new live streaming platform had been launched. As I watched it, three days later, I thought, I really do want to be involved in this. And so I sent Dr. Mazza an email, and I said, "I'm inspired, how can I be of help?" Since then, the learning community has really benefited. It's been a creative outlet for our students, and we're really grateful to go into this coming school year with a brand-new studio. Here you are, girls.
Our multimedia journey has really helped our students be able to creatively express themselves and share content with a wider, broader audience.
So, what is Studio 7B? Studio 7B is a state-of-the-art studio where students can design and produce media presentations in many different formats. They can publish this content to local and global audiences. This helps them connect with each other and the broader community, and most importantly, helps them build important 21st-century skills that transfer to all aspects of their lives.
So if we go to the next slide, and we kind of look at the strategic planning, these are the topics that we really want to encompass. So we start with space, we have our newly renovated studio, which we'll show you in a little bit. And then assess, we have authentic assessment grounded in project-based learning. And then social-emotional learning, this is a space where students can connect with each other and develop very unique skills. Curriculum, these projects are cross-disciplined, as well as extracurricular activities. And then for technology, we have state-of-the-art technology. We're using tools that we've never used before, and we're learning so much. And equity, we're amplifying student voice and local, as well as global leadership, and we're making sure that students feel like they're heard at our school.
What are the roles in Studio 7B? Well, here, there is a camera person who controls the camera and directs it. There are anchors who are on the broadcast and are presenting the content to the viewers. There's the director who helps to run the broadcast behind stage and make it smooth. There's the producer who communicates behind the scenes and on-camera and to help make sure that everything flows smoothly. There's the sound engineer who helps make the sound smooth. There's the video engineer who watches the video. There's the teleprompter who helps prompt the content for the anchors. And there's the audio technician who helps make sure the audio runs smoothly.
So what is the future of Studio 7B? Well, in the future, we want to see one-act plays, travel videos, sports broadcasting, and so much more. We just really want Studio 7B to be a place where students can creatively express themselves and give out content to our community and our school community that helps, that can really help enrich our social-emotional learning.
So as we wait for the rest of the equipment to come in, our CSF grant, about maybe two-thirds of it has come in. We still have some to, that are probably sitting on a cargo ship on a traffic jam on either the Atlantic or Pacific Ocean right now. But when that does arrive, we'll have more audio equipment, we'll also have a video switcher, and the lighting and sound components. But for right now, we would love to take the board up and check out the studio. We have nine other students that are up there right now, working within the roles that you see on the previous slide, Dr. Ackerman, from cameras all the way down through the video technicians. So at this time, I believe we're going to try and stream it to the screens that are here in the audience, so those of you can kind of see what we're doing. And...
That'd be great, so would you like to lead the board upstairs?
Let's do it.
Okay. Right, yeah, sorry, we'll be back.
Good evening, 7B, it's a wonderful, wistical Wednesday night at the big 7B. It's a basic schedule, the facts of the day. We'd like to give a warm welcome to all of our board members. Welcome to our humble zone. We're so excited to be on the magic broadcasting with you. With the flag.
Thanks, Zoya. And now, let's all rise to the side of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, free and without sin. And now, let's go.
Thank you, Asha. Good morning, everyone. We are so excited to be back in our moose studio. Try to guess the correct answer to today's trivia question. It is, well, first of all, it's a little piece fried, a little fried. It's a little, 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 it's a little. Okay, today's problem is. The correct answer is? Great curate. And now, let's go back in time to this week in history. In 7073, the lock-in team fried a bird. And now, over to you and all, after...
Alright, can you just go to camera three? Go to camera three.
Thank you, Olivia. And now, for today's lunch, we have? We have ravioli, marinara sauce, garlic bread, roasted processed trout, prosciutto, and hormone-free milk. And now, for today's lessons, we have? For band, we have seventh and eighth grade trumpet, period one. Seventh and eighth grade trombone, period two. For orchestra, we have seventh and eighth grade viola, period one, and seventh and eighth grade cello, space, period four. And now, turning it over to Ellie.
Transition over to one. Staying on camera three. Back to camera three.
Good morning, Seven Bridges, and here's today's quote of the day. "Alone we can do so little, but together we can do so much." Helen Keller. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Olivia.
Transition over to one, Seven Bridges over to one. Like a... Camera two, why didn't it?
Thanks, Ellie. And now, here's today's joke. Why did the bike fall over?
I don't know, why did it?
Because it was too tired! And now, over to Zoya.
Olivia, and now to a safe weather report. Today we'll have a current temperature of 30 degrees. Today will be a partly sunny, then cloudy day with a high temperature of 50 degrees. Now, over to Asha.
Thanks, Zoya. And now, we'd like for a very happy birthday to Katrina K., Madison F., and Lila D. Now, over to Zoya with the farewell.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for watching our broadcast, have a great day.
Three, two, one, out.[1666.88][1666.88][applause]
That was just the most exciting thing I think I've ever seen in Seven Bridges, so thank you very much, Dr. Mazza, and your studio team. So at this time, the Board of Education, I'd like to give them the opportunity to ask some questions. Dr. Mazza facilitated, if you want to answer a question, just raise your hand, and he'll give you the microphone, okay? So, to our board, go ahead.
I have a whole list, so as soon as it came down, I started scribbling. So how do you get selected to do this? Is this all voluntary?
Yes, so basically, um, yeah, it's basically like a club that you can sign up for at the beginning of the school year, or how I did it was, I was in a meeting with the assistant principal, and I just asked her, because I thought that it would be a really fun thing to do. And so basically, it's just a club, and you can go, and they will find a way to include you, depending on your interest and where you want to be in morning announcements.
I saw that you have anchor, you have director, you have producer, you have audio technicians. How do you get, how do the roles, do you change those roles throughout the year? Or you pick one, and that's how you stay?
Well, personally, I always want to be on-air, like that's, I never wanted to do backhand, but for some people who do want to do backhand or are more talented in those areas, they just tell Mr. Seraphin or Mr. V., who is assistant producer. And so, yeah, you just tell either of those people, and they'll find a way to put you in the back. And also Alex, he's one of the main student producers, and he's one of the main in our backhand group. So, yeah, you just talk to Alex or Mr. V. or Mr. Seraphin, and they'll find a way to help you in the back. So, yeah, you just talk to Alex or Mr. V or Mr. Seraphin and they'll find a way to help you in the back. Or if you want to be on air, you talk to Mr. Seraphin. That's what I did and he let me do the birthdays.
Okay, sorry, I have a couple more.
Go ahead.
Is the format similar for every show that you do? Or do you change that up?
Well, we keep the same format of, we have news, we go through the same segments. But there's never, there's never two broadcasts that are exactly the same. So every broadcast is going to have its own quirks and every broadcast is going to be a little bit different. But we try and follow the same format.
Okay, great. And how often do you do a show? Once a day, twice a day? Once a week?
Oh, we do it once every day. In the morning.
Great. I have more, but I'll let the other board members, I don't want to monopolize.
Yes, I think some of them were answered already. But so what happens when, for example, Alex graduates and he's like the main student producer? Is there somebody in training that can take over?
Well, everyone has a chance to try these different roles. And it's really whatever you want to do. And we'll find a way to organize it. Maybe we have two student producers. We find a way to make it work and that's what makes the morning announcements really great. Because there's always adjustments and we work with what we have and we try to make it great.
And once we get the full complement of equipment, then we'll have a news crew that rotates each week. So all the kids will get a chance to, you know, be on air, try the backend, and really try to create as well-rounded as a crew as possible and give everyone that opportunity.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, you know, we started off this year really talking about what those roles are going to look like because we knew we were going to have the studio. So, you know, we can't wait for all that to kind of really come to fruition the way you, we're all able to see it tonight. But even down to, you know, the way we, you know, we're going to write scripts and, you know, really having a real-world kind of perspective of how scripts are written. Which is why I'm able, you know, for me, you know, having worked in the industry, being able to give that to our students, just showing them, you know, again, like with the scripts, you know, you really have technical information on one side and the content on the other. So this is something that is going to be really rich and really, you know, evolving because we have the studio.
Awesome, thank you.
So I'm curious if you, and I understand you have the morning announcements that follows a typical format every day. But if you have content ideas or programming ideas, how do, how do your creative ideas get discussed and chosen?
So basically, we have a idea submission form, a Google Forms, a Google Forms. And anyone who wants to submit in our school can. And we have a committee that reviews it. So, and they approve it or not approve it. And yeah, that's pretty much how it works.
Right. And who gets to find all the daily jokes?
So, actually, me. I go, I go on a web, on a website, on the web. I find a joke, for example, the best joke in the world. What do you call a running turkey? Fast food! So I find a joke, I make an animation of it. I make an animation of a running turkey going out of McDonald's.
Okay, great.
And then I post, I send it on Canvas to Mr. Vermette or Mr. V. And put the joke in and the joke. Then I send that. And then on the next broadcast, Mr. Seraphin imports that into the studio or StreamYard or whatever we're using and then use it. And then Zoya and Georgia say the joke and make that amazing maniacal laugh. So, yeah.
Thank you. I have, I have two questions for you guys. The first is, how do we all get the joke of the day? But my other question is, if you guys were given sort of free access to the studio beyond the morning announcement, what kind of programming would you want to put on?
If I was given the free access to the studio, I would honestly put on like, well, I don't know, news reports or like, kind of like sports things from our Seven Bridges teams and for our school sports. But that's honestly what I would do. But, yeah.
Great, thank you. Vicki, did you have a question?
Yeah, no, not yet. So first of all, I just want to say congratulations. It was amazing up there and I just wish the entire audience had been there to kind of feel the excitement. There was a lot of excitement backstage. I don't know about everyone else, but I really felt it. And I wonder if you guys feel that too, because there's a lot going on. And it's not as simple as you would think just watching the show. I saw a lot of running around in the background in that other room. I saw a lot of you kind of scrambling on the sides to figure out when to, when to say things. So it looked, you know, a lot more complicated than I would have expected. So I was very impressed by it and you all seemed so excited by what you were doing. So it made us excited up there too. So you must know that people are getting nearly all their information now through media and social media and exactly what you're working on. And so I wonder if you have any thoughts about the challenges of communicating correct factual information? A lot of times these days, there are a lot of questions about what the actual facts are as opposed to opinions. And so, you know, looking forward into the future, I wonder what your thoughts are about that and what your interests are in pursuing this later on in life?
So I think that's definitely one of the challenges of media in general. And I think that we try to do that as a morning announcements by checking multiple sources and sometimes having others review it and trying to make sure that we are as factual as possible and show, and show no opinions unless we actually say that, we say that it is an opinion. And I think that this is a challenge, definitely, because it is not easy. But it is necessary to have a reliable source. And I think that's what we really want to give students, a reliable source where they can have fun and watch and enjoy it, but where they can also watch and learn and trust what we say.
Thank you, that was wonderful.
Okay, are there any other questions?
What grades are you all in? Fifth, eighth, or just?
Okay, how about like if you're in fifth grade, raise your hand.
So fifth grade, raise your hand. Sixth grade, raise your hand. Seventh grade. Eighth grade.
Great mix. Excellent.
Yeah, and it's nice, it's a nice way to meet people also outside of your, your classes.
Listen, I got to tell you, that was an excellent, excellent presentation. So I want to thank our Seven Bridges administration and our student production team. And that was fantastic. So on behalf of the administration, I know I can share on behalf of the board, thank you for coming tonight and showing us the work that you're doing every day. I mean, this was really great. Okay, so thank you, Seven Bridges. Give us a second. We need to do some transitional stuff here to get ready for the second half of the board agenda today. So I would like to welcome you guys to head out and head home. Do we take a picture?
Oh, oh yeah, let's take a picture. Come to center stage. No, center stage with Dr. Mazza and Mrs. Rappaport. And we'll take a picture. All right, thank you, Seven Bridges Middle School. Have a good night. That's a wrap. Thank you for coming.
Great job, everyone, really. That was so much fun.
Thank you for coming. Okay, should I? No.
Field trip during the board meeting.
Right, should I go?
No, that was exciting.
Okay. So, good evening. We have a lot on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to try to be brief, but should warn you, I'm probably going to fail. But we also have a number of things to celebrate here. So first, thank you, as they're leaving, to our presenters from 7B. We always love having students at our meetings. We're so happy to have seen this presentation. Thank you for hosting us. This is our last meeting here, we expect, but it was great to be here tonight, to have this presentation here and to get to, to go up to the studio, which was really, really cool. And thank you also, they're long gone, but for the lovely music from our magical choir. It's nice to have the festivity back at our meetings. So we thank them for bringing the holiday cheer. And congratulations again to our girls swim and dive team because they absolutely rocked it this season. So just as a reminder, and I think Dr. Ackerman will probably speak to this as well, the department, the Westchester Department of Health is running a vaccine clinic for district students tomorrow afternoon at Bell. As a reminder, fully vaccinated students are not subject to quarantine. And unfortunately, cases are surging again statewide. So we're pleased that the district is able to partner with the Westchester Department of Health to provide an easy and safe opportunity for all of our K-12 students to be vaccinated. Just to be clear, all shots are going to be administered by the Department of Health staff. We are simply providing the venue to offer easy access to shots for the community and we encourage you to take advantage of this opportunity. So there are two items delineated under the president's report tonight. Item 1.1.1 reads, "Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation of Victoria Baird-Tip effective December 31, 2021." "As much as I am sad to do it, I move 1.1.1." I'll reluctantly second it. Okay, so now I'm going to open it up to discussion and, and I'll start. You know, we weren't going to let you go without us all saying something. Vicki, you have given back to this community for well longer than you have served on this board through the PTA and myriad other positions. And you are only leaving us to serve the community in another way. For that, we all thank you. Your service on this board for over a decade has been marked by incredible dedication and a depth of knowledge about, well, everything, that will be deeply missed. You have been an incredible mentor to me and to so many others who joined the school board while you have served on it and I will miss working with you. Your simultaneous service to this board and the West Putt Board was a huge undertaking and our district and all of the districts under the West Putt umbrella are better for it. Vicki, thank you for your service, your friendship, your collegial and professional approach to all things and I wish you all the best in your new role. We'll miss you.
Thank you, Hillary.
Go Warren. You want to wait?
Kaylee.
I'm going to keep it short because I'm still going to be talking to you. I haven't had an opportunity to work with you that long, but the past about six months or so, I can, I learned so much from you and I'm really going to miss you. I'm really going to miss working with you and gleaning from your knowledge and your wisdom. But like Hillary said, you're not leaving us to just go hang out somewhere. But you're going to serve another part of our community and we are going to be better for it. And I'm just thankful and grateful that I had the opportunity to work alongside you for the past six months. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. Vicki, this moment certainly is bittersweet. We are very grateful that as a newly elected member of the town board, you will be continuing your service to this community. But this board and I personally will certainly feel the loss of your presence. You and I knew each other prior to our board service together as we were both involved in the PTA and other community organizations. But while you and I were elected to the board together in 2017, you were re-elected for a third term while I was a newbie. There's a lot to learn as a new board member. Since day one, I have appreciated your willingness to share your infinite knowledge of this district as well as local and state and educational policy and initiatives. You keep all of us up to date on that, as Hillary referenced. And your willingness to take time to talk to any board member or any community member and for that matter, about any issue, big or small, that is important to them. Your passion for education is clear, as is your dedication to excellence and community service. And your immense skill set will certainly be transferable to your new position. I have so valued our board service together, not because we always agree on everything, none of us do here. And not because, as an attorney, we do sometimes approach matters in a similar fashion. And not because we frequently tend to wear similar outfits to board meetings, which we laugh about a lot. I have valued our service together because you are an intelligent, hardworking, thoughtful, dedicated, and caring colleague and friend. And that's not such an easy replacement to find. So I will miss sitting beside you at the board table, but I wish you only the best as you jump no doubtful force into your next chapter. And I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Jane.
Well, we don't wear the same outfits, so. Well, Vicki, we've been on quite a journey serving on the school board, serving our school district and our community together. We were elected not knowing a lot about our peers that are on the board. I know of your community service background, but not much about you. When I was running for the Board of Education, I called to ask you a legal question about board service. I was impressed and immediately realized by the way you answered me that I would enjoy serving with you and that our school district was in good hands with you as a board member. I've spent eight and a half years serving with you more than any other board member or administrator in the district. We've worked on many different projects, including working through the tax cap and its impact on our annual budget planning, unfunded mandates and advocacy with the state of New York, working to pass a capital bond to improve our, improve our school buildings, library, and curriculum to continue moving our progressive education forward for the benefit of all the students in our district. There have been some challenges in the district that we were presented with during our tenure together. However, having you on the Board of Education helped us stay focused. After eight and a half years, I would say I know you pretty well. In addition to serving together, we've been to many school events together. Our kids have gotten to know each other through music and sports, two of them even went to college together in New York City. Many of our community members have not had the pleasure of getting, of knowing you yet. I'm sure that they will quickly come to recognize your incredible gifts, your dedication, knowledge, expertise, work ethic, all wrapped in a beautiful bow of empathy as you always work for the best of the town of Newcastle. Thank you for your service to the Chapagor Central School District Board of Education. So as this journey comes to an end, I started with a journey, I think about other adventures that people have taken. One comes to mind is the Wizard of Oz. At the end of the story, when they were all saying goodbye, Dorothy looked at Scarecrow, whom she had this privilege of spending the most time with in Oz, and simply said, "I think I'll miss you most."
We have a statement on behalf of West Putt. So David, if you could play that for us, please? Thank you, Warren.
Thank you, Vicki.
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 Thank you for your leadership and passion.
Vicki, thank you so much for being our fearless leader.
Thank you for your service and leadership as president of the Westchester Putnam School Board Association.
From Marjorie, thank you for your leadership of Westchester Putnam County School Board Association these past three years and for your many years of advocacy and support for students and public schools.
I wanted to thank you for your years of service on the West Putt Board.
Thank you for your years of service, your leadership and friendship.
From day one, you've been an engaged and dedicated member of the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association Board of Directors. You really helped us focus on core governance topics and on advocacy issues that require action.
You've been such a wonderful leader. You always manage to make every single person feel heard and feel valued. And it's just been a great model of leadership.
Thank you for leading West Putt, for ensuring all directors' voices are heard, for looking out for all 54 school, school districts and school boards, and for supporting me through the craziest first year ever.
You have been a powerful example to me of thoughtful deliberation and of consensus building with the topics we have had to address as an organization.
Your service takes us to the next level where, when we look at what you've done for West Putt over the last many for West Putt over the last many years, and the number of districts that you've been able to impact through West Putt, and the number of years that you've dedicated yourself to this organization, and that legacy that will flow through many years after you leave, it truly is extraordinary.
I know you strive to be a champion for all children, and your efforts have positively impacted students, both in your home district of Chappaqua and across the region.
Your ability to bring people together to work toward the greater good for all of our students is very much appreciated.
For the past several years, and especially the last three as president, whenever there was a meeting, a hearing, or a situation that needed our voice, you were always there without fail.
Thank you for your leadership, for your thoughtful, careful, considered decision-making. And thank you for your wonderful ability to diffuse tense situations.
I have learned a great deal from our conversations over the years, and I'm going to miss your presence. Thank you for providing me an opportunity to work with you on the executive committee. It's truly been a pleasure to work together on behalf of students in the region.
It's been a pleasure working with you at Westchester Putt for the short time that we've had together, and boy, have I learned a lot already. I was at a challenging school board meeting recently, and I found myself thinking, "What would Vicky do here?"
As West Putt president, you led the organization by raising key issues and asking probing questions.
During your tenure, you led with an equitable and fair approach. You always listened to all voices at the table, and especially to me if I had a question regarding something that popped up in White Plains.
Two years plus an extra year, so appreciated. You've done an amazing job, and I'm sure you're going to enjoy your retirement.
So you've made an impression on me. I respect you immensely.
Your commitment, your passion, and advocacy for schools, our communities, and our students made a difference for us all. It's been far from easy, but you always rose to the occasion when we needed it most.
We are a better organization today due to your hard work and guidance.
So we're just grateful for your leadership of the organization and for all that you've done for the students broadly of Westchester and Putnam.
So thank you again for your service, and I hope you find some time post-pandemic to relax.
It was a personal and professional honor to work with you, side by side.
You have been a huge asset to West Putt and to public education for all the children in this region, and I wish you the best of luck. We will miss you.
I miss you already. I wish you the best of luck in your future.
Best wishes in all of your future endeavors.
Thanks again.
I wish you all the very best, and will miss you. With gratitude, Marjorie.
We are really going to miss you.
Wishing you all the best in the future, and you will be greatly missed.
It's been my honor to work with you.
So nice. Nice. I want to invite up, I know that the PTA wants to also say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Beth Darnold, and yes, I'm speaking on behalf of the PTA tonight to Vicky. But Peggy McHado, our president, did ask me to share with everyone that she could not be here in person because of a COVID situation in her household, but I'm sure she's streaming in right now, and I'm going to share some written words from her and from our organization. On behalf of the Chappaqua PTA, thank you so very much, Vicky, for your 10-plus years of service to the Board of Education, in addition to your years of serving students and families in other ways, including as a past PTA president. We are so grateful for your leadership through so many important developments. I better put my glasses. Rethinking learning spaces, the expansion of technology, adding turf fields and improvements for the athletics department, supporting faculty development and maintenance, and so many other things. Most importantly, the mission of educating all students in a meaningful, safe, and healthy way has been known to be your priority above all else. Thank you again. We know you will continue such excellent work for our town of Newcastle. And these are for you.
Okay. And then, Vicky, on behalf of the school district, I just would like to share, I'm not sure unless you've served as a member of a Board of Education in Chappaqua, you could possibly understand the enormity of this role. And I've had the privilege of working with you, Vicky, since my first day, and you have never wavered in your support and advocacy for our students. You've always added a necessary perspective at the table to push our thinking forward in a way that benefited our children and never went unnoticed. The precision at which you grappled with extraordinarily difficult circumstances with this administrative team was needed, appreciated, and often provided the necessary push to examine all aspects of issues fully to make the right decision for our kids. Vicky calls at just the right moments. She knows how to craft statements in a way that are just so clear and to the point, and she can skillfully coach you to support your professional growth, to help you be better at different aspects of your job. She's a fierce advocate for children and a wonderful person to work with and for. Vicky, thank you for your service as a member of the Board of Education, and on a personal level, thank you for supporting me as the superintendent. Thank you for your stability. I will always remember your counsel, your humility, your compassion, your kindness, your understanding, and the seriousness at which you approached your work on behalf of all the children in our district. And while you will always be missed, you will always be welcomed here. So thank you, Vicky. And then on behalf of the district, we have this for you. You know, put on your desk. Wow. We're not going to be able to leave the building tonight. And then this also. Here's from the dead for West Putt. Oh, thank you. Okay. So I guess that. I guess that that officially brings us to the point where we have to vote on 1.1.1.
Can I say, I just, I have something.
Sure.
Hopefully brief, but maybe not brief enough to say. So should I do it now before?
Sure.
Before you take my resignation, or you know.
Yes.
Okay, so I am really incredibly moved by everything I've heard tonight. I, I'm so appreciative, and I'm going to miss all of you incredibly, even though I'm not going to be far, but I, I just want to say a few things. So I know that I am permitted to be both on the school board and on the town board together, but I just want everyone to know that, I just feel that all the possible conflicts and the appearance of the conflict of interest is not going to serve the best interests of the community. But I just want to say that it has been such an incredible honor to serve on the Chappaqua School Board for these past 10 and a half years. It's been four board elections, which is the, not my forte. I like to do the work. I don't like to do the, all the promotion and all that sort of thing that goes on with elections, but I just like to be in the background and really do the work for the community. I just want to thank the entire CCSD community for putting your trust in me for, for all of these years, and I've always done my very best to live up to this trust and to serve our, our children and our entire community and our taxpayer. We've been through a lot of ups and downs in this district. There have been some great accomplishments and some great challenges throughout the years. But throughout all of these times, good and bad, I've never regretted one moment of serving in this role, and it's been one of my most rewarding experiences. I've always seen this role about shaping the future. You can't overestimate the impact of a great education or the impact of just one great teacher on a child who will become an adult and in turn will impact our world. We shape young minds to become informed, ethical, lifelong learners who are ready to become productive and engaged participants in our democracy, and this is strengthening our democracy, and I can't think of a greater mission. The past 10 years have been really pivotal for school districts. We've seen the advents of the tax cap that has severely restrained our ability to raise revenue. This brought me into advocacy work that I've done for, for the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. We, we brought in a lot of innovation to this district in the form of all of the new learning spaces, but I, I've always stressed that we didn't do it to have really nice spaces. We did it to change the way education was delivered to children, and we do it so well, and we're very fortunate here to have a team of incredible educators. We added social and emotional learning to our curriculum. We've done a great deal of very, very impactful, quick, initial work on equity, the work of anti-racism, and recognizing and understanding the lived experiences of all individuals and building a community where everyone feels like they belong and they're a valued member. And I know that you will continue the commitment to this work. We have, and we're going to now, have a new Board of Ed, three Board of Ed strategic questions, and I'm so grateful that I get to be a part of that. I'm so proud of all these endeavors and many others, and there is one, last but not least, that I know has put our school district on the road to success in all our goals. A school board makes only one hire, and that is to hire the superintendent. So six years ago, we hired Dr. Christine Ackerman, and she then made all the other hires and built an A-plus team. And I have never seen such a group of talented administrators all in one, all in one district. They, and together with our board, I know will lead us in the right direction for the future. So there's one thing you can always expect from school board service, and that is the unexpected, as you all now know. And this is marked by having to deal with challenges that come up with no warning, and it's about adapting to challenges in the most effective and immediate, immediate way possible. I learned a really important lesson my first day in law school in my very first class, which was civil procedure. The professor had just two words on the board, three, and those words were efficiency versus fairness. And I found that in the most difficult times, there's a tension between those two things. One is efficiently doing our job as delineated by protocols and legalities, and two, being the voice of our people and serving the ultimate best interests of our students and taxpayers. At these most difficult times, I've always chosen fairness over efficiency. When times get tough, I choose our children and our community. We serve on the school board, but as elected representatives, we may at times be the only avenue for our community's self-expression and self-determination on matters that touch everyone. And as elected officials, I always believe that we are the manifestation of the ideals of a representative democracy. So I want to express my eternal gratitude to all who contribute to our school mission, our talented faculty who directly impact our students, our dedicated staff who provide the support for this work, our administrators at the school building level who lead their teams, and our central administrators led by our superintendent, Dr. Christine Ackerman, Dr. Tony Sananis for Human Resources and Leadership, Dr. Adam Pease for Curriculum, Jamie Edelman, who's now taking over pupil personnel, and Andrew Lennon, our new business officials. I must also mention John Chow, our former business official, who I've known since he arrived in 2007, when I started my adventures with the school district as a new PTA president. So we started together. I want to thank all the groups also that support our school district, the Chappaqua PTA, the Chappaqua School Foundation, the Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund, the Sports Boosters, the Chappaqua Library, I hope I'm not forgetting anyone. I will never forget the board members I've worked with and that I've been in the trenches with, who know the things that no one else will ever know and understand what we go through every day. And in order of appearance on the school board, I've worked with Lisa Davis, Jeffrey Mester, Randy Ketchis, Allison Gardner, Karen Visser, Warren Mezner, Jane Shepherdson, Holly McCall, Hillary Grasso, and Kaylee Huang. Of all the board members I've worked with, Warren is the longest, at eight and a half years. And I mentioned Lisa Davis, whose seat I took over, but who I worked with as she led the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association with distinction. So I'm eternally grateful to all of you, and I know that we'll keep in touch. And finally, I want to thank our entire community for supporting our schools, the parents who engage with us as partners to educate their kids, and to all the taxpayers with no children in our schools who help us to support this work. We have one of the best school districts in New York and even in the country, and most people move here for our school district. Studies have shown that functional school boards are the key to highly functioning school districts, and dysfunctional school boards can bring the best of school districts into a downward spiral. So the best school boards have members who come to the position with no outside agenda, no political agendas or any other, but the sole agenda of serving the best interests of students and the community. I have every confidence that I leave the school district in excellent hands. So this is not a goodbye. I'm not going far, and I'm incredibly excited for my new role and to continue working with the school board in a new capacity. So I know we'll keep doing really good things together, and I want to thank you all for your very kind words tonight.
So now I need to ask y'all for a vote. So all in favor of 1.1.1, please say aye. Aye. Okay. Um, so I just want to say a word. I know people are wondering what happens next, so I want to be clear on a few things. Regardless of any appointment to fill her seat between now and May, Vicky's seat will be on the ballot in May for a term to run through next June 30 of 2023. So Vicky submitted her resignation on Monday, and while we had been discussing our options, could not obviously formally work to appoint someone until she submitted her resignation. We have two priorities in appointing someone to fill her seat from January to May. The first is that the person have a working knowledge of the district's finances. This person would be seated on the board essentially for budget season, and while the budget is never the only thing on the board's plate, it's a major undertaking, and throwing someone into that in January without that background would be hard. Our second priority is that we want to make sure that the May election is fair to anyone in our community who might want to run. We don't want there to be any perceived incumbency advantage for anyone who we would appoint, so we will only appoint someone who would be jumping in for the four months without the intention to run again come May for the remainder of the term. We anticipate finalizing this process before the end of the year, and we'll communicate that to the community as soon as possible. So that brings us to 1.1.2, which is the strategic questions. And Vicky, I'm so glad we're hopefully adopting these strategic questions while you're still here, because you have been so instrumental in pushing for their revision and updating. So I'm going to move 1.1.2, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the following strategic questions, and I'll read them aloud again. They're on the screen, but just, it's probably far for some of our audience members. And again, we discussed this as our last meeting, but we've expanded the strategic questions from being two to three. The first one was left, I think virtually identical in its, in its original form. The second was tweaked slightly, and the third is now. So strategic question one, budget and operations. How can the district ensure continuing excellence in its academic, social, emotional, and extracurricular programs while developing a budget that is fiscally responsible? Strategic question two, teaching and learning. How can the district ensure that all students think deeply and creatively, support their thinking, apply problem-solving skills, work collaborative, collaboratively, and actively participate in their learning as they acquire content knowledge? And strategic question three, social, emotional learning. How can the district ensure that it develops students who are ethical, empathetic, respectful, and resilient global citizens and leaders? So can I please have a second, and then we'll open it to discussion? I'll second. So.
So discussion questions. That's pretty much what we had at the last meeting.
Okay.
We ended up with our comma discussion.
Yeah.
We had a comma discussion.
We did have a comma discussion.
I can't read it this far away where we land.
I think we landed at fewer commas.
Okay.
Against my instincts.
To make it consistent with the first.
To make it consistent. So all in favor of 1.1.2, please say aye.
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 Great. I feel really good about having adopted these, and now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ackerman.
Okay, so we are going to work through the superintendent front-end report to, so we can move into the insight report, which I know a lot of our audience members are here to view tonight, so Adam, Andrew, and I are going to do the community update very, very quickly. So the first thing I want to share with you is our updated vaccine information. You will notice we have three new buildings on there, Grafflin, Roaring Brook, and West Orchard, so the numbers are creeping up. We have quite a few students who are not accounted for in this percentage because they have had their second shot, but they haven't passed the two-week window. So I anticipate in January that our percentages will be much higher. And now you'll see in Bell and Seven Bridges, our percentage went down because we've included our fifth and sixth grade in our accounting, but again, I anticipate that these numbers will dramatically shift as we make our way into January. I do want to share that we are having our clinic tomorrow. We have 90 students at this time registered, it is still open, so if you'd like to have your child receive their vaccination at Bell tomorrow, you are certainly welcome to do that. I have a number of students who are also receiving their second series tomorrow, we welcome everyone, so this will, the process will probably remain open until early tomorrow morning, so if you would like to have your child vaccinated and they are in the age range of five to 11, they are welcome to make an appointment, and then we will facilitate the second dose on January 6th at Bell Middle School. So just to update you on our testing information, we're still running Monday afternoons from three to five. You can see the number of people who are still required to test because they are unvaccinated, and then we don't have any of our unvaccinated students participating in our afternoon session on Monday, but I do want to share with you, we have had, this is the number of students and staff who are required to be vaccinated that submit a private test to us, but we have had a number of students who are participating in tests to stay at the elementary level specifically because they've been exposed, but they're not fully vaccinated. And so we just wanted to show you on average, this is the number of students that we've been testing per week, so we're in our third week currently. Our high in week two was associated with bus exposure, but one of the things that Adam and I didn't anticipate is that we have a number of families who are self-reporting exposure at private events, they're also participating in our testing program, so this is working out nicely for our district. I'd like to thank Adam for helping us facilitate this in the morning, and our Seven Bridges staff and our high school nurses, they're coming over and they're helping us from 8:00 to 8:30, so we can make sure that we do this as efficiently as possible. Again, we'll continue this process until all of our students have had the opportunity to be vaccinated, so likely through the end of January.
And are most of the kids able to stay? Like, are most of those coming back negative?
Uh, yes, yes. So most of the students who participate in the program participated in it fully until they're clear to come back to school, but they're not released from quarantine until 10 days are over. And then we'd just like to share with you our exposure numbers for students who are unvaccinated who need to participate in tests to stay or have to stay home to access remote instructions. So this was the 17th, and this is where we are today. We have a number of new cases again, but we have very few students who need to quarantine now that we have more students who are vaccinated, and it just so happens that the students, the individuals who are positive haven't been in situations where exposure is anticipated, which is primarily on our buses. So we just want to highlight for you a few of the grants that are on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to Adam.
So the first one is a thanks to our Greeley Sports Boosters, there's, I guess our athletes are really now interacting with some pretty high-tech equipment, and so you see on the left is a volleyball training machine, and on the right side, a junior hack attack pitching machine, and so we have volleyball and baseball there, and you can see the donations for $4,000 and $4,198 respectively, so thanks to the Greeley Sports Boosters. We also have a number of CSF grants, one of them is snowshoe equipment for Grafflin to incorporate snowshoeing into our physical education program, so we think that's a neat opportunity for students. And we also have CSF grants that cover thinking classrooms in math, so these are some horizontal workspaces as well as some movable whiteboards that are pre-printed with some graphs that they use in math classes, so it just increases the interactivity for our students there.
And I would like Andrew to talk about two emergency resolutions we have on the agenda tonight, so, Andrew?
That's correct. So in November, early November, I talked with the board about two issues we had, a water main break Greeley, and then quickly followed by a sewer main blockage that turned into a significant repair. Need the resolutions 5.16 and 5.17 this evening, declare those emergencies. They give us the authorization to do two things, is we had to rapidly work to repair those, so we couldn't go out to competitive bidding, so we wanted to follow that process to declare them an emergency so we can get students in classrooms. And the other part is, we will attempt to do budget transfers throughout the year, but should we need to use fund balance to cover the cost of these projects, we needed to ask the board to approve that, so these resolutions will do that for us.
Okay, and so before Tony introduces our insight team, who we'd like to invite up to the stage right now, we have a table ready for you to work from, I just would like to acknowledge our music department, I know that Andrew Crisilia had mentioned that the high school team had been engaged in their concert season, and chorus is on for tomorrow night, but we put on some middle school concerts that were extraordinarily logistically challenging, so I want to acknowledge our middle school music staff for helping support our kids so that they could participate in concerts at the high school, and I want to thank our high school team for helping facilitate those big events for our district, so it was really nice to be able to support our students in that way. So without any further ado, Tony, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Christine, so excited tonight to have both Kia and Kate with us from Insight Education Group. Insight is who we partnered with through our RFP process earlier this year. So Kia, who has been working actively with us over the last several months, former eighth grade ELA teacher, worked in Louisiana and Philly, eventually also executive director of Charter School, has been our most consistent contact on a regular basis, who checked in through the equity audit process. We've also worked closely with Kate, she's facilitated some PD for us. Kate, a former elementary teacher, reading specialist, elementary principal, assistant superintendent, a lot of amazing experience in their worlds as practitioners, and they're bringing that to us now as partners in this work, as we look to create more equitable spaces for our kids. So Kia, Kate, thank you for being with us, excited to hear your findings from the equity audit that you conducted here in Chapakua.
Thank you so much. Can you all hear me clearly? Thank you so much, Dr. Sananis, and thank you so much to the board and to the broader community for having us this evening.
Is the microphone on?
Yeah, that's how it was asked, can you hear? There we go. Thank you. All right, thank you so much for the introduction, and we're excited to be here this evening. Kia Johnson, partnership manager with Insight Education Group, Kate England, senior associate. And so for the purposes of this evening, we are going to take a moment to review the Insight Equity Frameworks, that you all understand the foundations upon which the equity audit was conducted. We'll review the process, so talk with you at a high level around the data collection and analysis activities that we engaged in over the course of the audit. We'll dig into the recommendations and findings, and then we will close out and share some next steps following the publication of the final report.
Good evening, everybody. So I'd like to just quickly walk us through the Insight Education Group Equity Framework, and every equity audit report that we write, and every equity audit that we conduct is grounded in our equity framework, which you see up on the screen. So we have five domains that we look at separately, but also collectively to assess a district's movement toward more equitable opportunities for students. The left-hand side, as you can see, refers to the system structures and resources in the district, and that's primarily a central office function. So do we have a strategic plan that reflects equity? Are we organizing our resources to make sure that we're funding equitably, et cetera? The second domain is culture and community, which speaks to our movement to develop anti-racist cultures. It speaks to some work that you've done in Chapakua recently, obviously embedding social, emotional learning in your schools and really putting an emphasis on that, and then also thinking about how we're continuing to engage the community and build that social trust that everybody has a voice in the process. Our third domain speaks to racial equity in the workforce, and those are things that we talk about in terms of recruiting teachers, retaining teachers, and thinking about the pipelines that we have in place in the district to ensure promotion for candidates. And then finally, I think we think more about these, these are the traditional domains that we think about when we talk about equity, and that's professional learning and personal growth, making sure that we are developing ourselves as the adults in the district and the folks responsible for educating children to understand equitable practices, and then finally, looking at our curriculum instruction and learning opportunities for students through that lens of equity, making sure that our curriculum is racially competent, and that our instructional delivery is addressing each student's needs. So this is a slightly different look at the five domains, and I think what's important to note here is that we focus on the words opportunity, access, and outcomes. So we hear a lot in schools and districts, well, we offer AP, for example, that's an opportunity that we have, but how are we ensuring that every student has access to AP classes? That's really an equity move, and we know that if every student has access to AP classes or higher-level classes, that obviously impacts their outcomes to be more successful in the future. So another look that we do when we're conducting an equity audit is, yes, the district has opportunities, but who's actually taking part in AP classes or enrichment or extracurricular So paying closer attention to Chapakua itself right now, we have a really rigorous equity audit process that we've embarked on and are just about finishing conducting as we speak, and we began in August of 2021 with a document and process review. We've looked at all kinds of things, the district has been really generous in providing us with strategic plans, organizational charts, all kinds of documents for us to review to assess whether the district is organized, to focus on equity and how we can make recommendations around that. We've looked at a lot of different qualitative and quantitative data, student and staff demographics, for example, student achievement, many aspects of quantitative data. And then what I think we did a really excellent job on here is a really robust stakeholder engagement process, so we administered surveys, as you can see up to many people in the district. We had a total of 2,557 respondents in our surveys, which is a really high number for a district this size, and we also conducted 23 focus groups that had a total of approximately 270 participants, as well as one-to-one interviews with senior leaders in the district. So the stage we're in right now is, obviously this evening, we're going to provide a very high-level overview of our findings and recommendations to you all, and then we'll be finalizing the presentation of the equity audit report, and also our recommendations and findings, to provide the report to you by January 7th. And finally, our next move will be to share the finding specifically with CCSD staff on January 11th, so we have a really great progression planned around getting you a final report, which will be far more detailed than this report, by the way, to the board, the equity audit report itself is very, very comprehensive, so we're just providing you again, a very high-level overview of some of the findings. And in a moment, Kia is going to walk you through specifically some of the things that we found, but just to give you a sense of what the full report will look like, every report starts with an introduction, obviously, and some context that's specific to the district, and then our methodology is explained really clearly in terms of how we collected data, what we did with the data once we collected it, what we found in the surveys, et cetera, and how we analyze the data. And then finally, for each of the five domains that I just referenced, a portion of research that explains the domain, we then delve into a pretty comprehensive narrative that weaves in the findings that we found, so we don't simply report statistics, but we really try to nest it in the context of the district. Sorry, I feel my butt back is to the entire time. And then we list our findings and our recommendations, so each section for each domain features those main aspects. And this is just another way to think about our methodology, I believe that I've addressed most of this, so we, you know, we talked about the surveys, we talked about the focus groups, and I do want to back up to the top point around data collection, I want to thank the senior team here, because we really worked very closely with Tony's team and Philip and Tanuke in the district to both facilitate the focus groups and the surveys, but also get us all the data that we really needed, so it's definitely been a really strong collaborative process with help from the district, so we appreciate that. And now I will turn it over to Kia to walk us through the overall assets that we found, and then some high-level findings and recommendations.
Thank you, Kate. One thing I do want to just point out before we dive into the overall assets, is when we are reviewing some of the data tonight, especially pertaining to survey responses, you're going to hear the term levels of agreement consistently throughout, and when we say levels of agreement, that was measured on a Likert scale of four, with three indicating consensus, and so for every prompt where we were reviewing and analyzing respondent, we were looking to see how far away from consensus we were to help inform what some of the recommendations should be in that particular domain. All right, so first, we just want to start with reviewing some of the overall assets. First is that there was significant evidence of the district leadership's here's commitment to equity, equity access and anti-racism. Two specific sources that we just cited for this evening were the most recent new teacher orientation, and so we had access to orientation schedules over the past five years, and this most recent year, there was particular attention paid to addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion, with an emphasis on ensuring that educators as practitioners were committed to developing anti-racist mindsets. And there was also the integration of a director of equity, inclusion, and wellness, and a staff developer for DEI and SEL, again, highlighting the district's commitment to understanding that there needs to be leadership and capacity to really lead this work in an intentional and strategic way. Around culture and community, there is a lot of evidence that many families and caregivers do feel comfortable in their children's schools here, and that they feel comfortable engaging both with staff and leadership and conversation, both about student progress and about their experiences here in the broader school community, and that's definitely an asset that we want to continue to be able to build on as we think about ensuring that all families in the district have that similar experience and feeling of belonging. Professional learning and personal growth, and so we'll dig into domain four in just a moment, but staff members at all levels here in the district expressed interest in advancing and developing their understanding of equity and expanding their skills as it relates to their job functions, and also demonstrated and indicated commitment to identifying their own growth areas and gaps as an important way of making sure that we're advancing equity and creating an inclusive experience for all students in the district. And finally, in curriculum instruction and learning, domain five, members at all levels of the organization did express a consistent level of agreement that students' academic needs overall are being met adequately here in Chapakua Central School District. So with that, we'll take a look at domain one, and starting with the overall themes and findings and structure, systems, and resources. First finding is that there's a need to establish a clear definition and vision for equity across the district. Across all stakeholder group surveys, there was an average level of agreement of 2.4 when given the prompt, the district has a clear definition of equity, which speaks to a lack of consensus in that area, and we'll take a look at that in just a moment. There are an abundance of initiatives and resources within the district that are aimed at advancing equity, and so some that were frequently cited across all stakeholder groups were the CARES Committee, the CHF fellows, and the PTA Diversity Committee. And there is also evidence that there's a need to further define the systems that are in place to identify and address potential inequities. Some of those examples are allocation of resources, access to academic supports and interventions, implementation of discipline policies, and to ensure also that all stakeholders have an understanding of and how to access and utilize those systems. So if you look at this first chart, the prompt here is the district has a clear definition of equity, so across all stakeholders, there was a level of agreement of 2.4, again, not demonstrating consensus across all stakeholder groups. Families and caregivers responded at a level of 2.75, school-based staff at 2.85, school leaders at 2.67, and non-school-based staff, which is district directors and administrators, at a level of 1.5. So again, just illuminating the need to ensure alignment, getting closer to consensus, and making sure that there is a clear vision and definition. So with that, the recommendations are to first, develop a district equity team to serve in an advisory capacity, to ensure that equitable practices are enacted across the district in a streamlined fashion. So we would recommend enlisting the Director of Equity, Inclusion, and Wellness, and the staff developer of DEI and SEL to chair that work, and to identify the key district stakeholders that, at all levels of the organization, that would work to co-lead the equity work. And so one of the things I would like to highlight here is the importance of making sure that across the district, we believe and we live that equity is everyone's work, that it's not- that equity is everyone's work, that it's not, should not rest squarely on the shoulders of two or three district leadership administrators, that we are really being intentional about distributing that leadership across the districts, identifying clear roles and responsibilities for that district equity team, allowing that district equity teams to be the body by which an equity plan is created that includes a vision of equity, a definition of equity, where pertinent district data is reviewed and where goals for progress in those identified district priorities around race and equity are also able to be monitored. Examining current practices around identifying inequities at the school building level and also making sure that the district equity team has formal structures to collaborate with the CARES Committee and the PTA Diversity Committee to ensure alignment in all of our practices and messaging. Our second recommendation here is to assist each school in developing a school-based equity team to serve as leaders in developing equitable practices at the building level. And so making sure that the district equity team is serves as the liaison between the work that is happening at the district level and on school-based teams, so identifying participants in each building, identifying clear roles and responsibilities for each member of the school-based team, having schools develop building-level plans for equity aligned to the school improvement plans and to the district's higher-level equity plan, and making sure that the school-based equity team is receiving ongoing equity-related professional learning opportunities and providing them to all staff members in their building. And again, ensuring the alignment between the district-level equity team and plan and the work that's happening in the buildings. Our third recommendation here is to develop system-wide data practices that examine equitable outcomes and opportunities and access for all students. And so thinking about how we can actually use and review data at the district level and at the building level to reveal disproportionalities in students' opportunities, access, and their outcomes, identifying consistent data points, so academic achievement data, disciplinary infractions, outcomes, access to enrichment programs, et cetera, that we're examining at the district level and making sure that we are identifying the areas for programmatic improvement and also developing a specific planning process at the district level and also in each school that allows us to use that data to help mitigate any disproportionalities that are discovered through those data reviews and processes. All right, going on to domain two, looking at overall themes and findings and culture and community. As a whole, Chappaqua Central School District students that participated in surveys did report a high level of agreement at 3.18 with two well-being factors, feeling valued and maintaining a sense of belonging in their school environment. There were some differences that we will explore in just a moment in terms of student feelings of belonging when looking more closely at student subgroups, particularly gender identity, which eliminated a need for us to think about how we can create an affirming and welcoming experience for all students. Families and caregivers did report an overall high level of agreement with the prompt, I'm comfortable communicating with the teachers and administrators of my students. And caregivers reported varying levels of agreement when asked, do you feel that you have a voice in the district? Finally, across all stakeholder groups, there were varying levels of agreement with the prompt, school discipline policies and practices are enforced consistently with all students. And so if we take a look here at the chart regarding the prompt, I feel a sense of belonging in my school. Across all students, there was an average level of agreement consensus of 3.18. Males here in the district experienced the highest sense of belonging at 3.28 in comparison to females, which agreed at a level of 3.12. Students that identified as non-binary at 2.54, and students that preferred not to disclose their gender identity at 2.84. And so we'll talk a little bit more about how we can ensure that we are identifying the gaps in terms of value and sense of belonging between all students and students that choose, that identify as non-gender conforming. Secondly, school discipline policies and practices are enforced consistently with all students. So across all stakeholders, again, just short of consensus at a level of agreement of 2.8. Families and caregivers agree to the level of 2.4, school-based staff agree to a level of 2.63. School leaders had the highest level of agreement at 3.33. Non-school-based staff agreed at a level of 2.2, and students did have consensus at a level of three. And so again, illuminating an opportunity to really align those these policies and beliefs to ensure that there is consensus across stakeholders. So our recommendations here are to enlist the entire school community to work toward establishing a supportive community focused on equitable outcomes and inclusivity among all stakeholder groups. First, we'd like to, again, make sure that the district equity team is being utilized as the visible and recognized leading voice in supporting this work and the place where authentic dialogue around some of the the places where there is not consensus right now can actually be discussed. Creating an authentic culture of two-way communication by developing transparent processes by which all stakeholder voices can be heard and acknowledged. I think it's really important that we create intentional and frequent and ongoing opportunities for district leaders, staff, and caregivers and students, particularly students of color and students from the LGBTQ plus community, those with disabilities, to be able to hear the issues that are relevant to them and their experiences here in the district, promote and affirming school culture using the tenets of Ruler. It has been elevated as an established system for SEL that we would like to continue to leverage and capitalize upon. And finally, tracking and monitoring data through the anonymous alert system. And so using that system to share some of the experiences that students are having in school buildings to identify trends and interventions needed supports accordingly. Our second recommendation here is to develop a restorative system-wide process for implementation, enforcement, and reporting of disciplinary matters. Accountability and transparency are a really important part of this work. And so first convening the DE, the district equity team and the district leadership team to review examples of positive behavior supports that exist nationally and also some within some of the buildings here and begin a process for streamlining implementation across the district. Reviewing the current district policy, 53, the Code of Conduct, to identify opportunities to supplement some of the punitive consequences that are outlined within that Code of Conduct with the existing restorative practices that are in place in the district and to develop a consistent plan for implementing at the building level. We also noted the importance of convening with and enlisting the support of the Committee on Special Education to make sure that those discipline practices and policies are equitable for students with disabilities. Reviewing the language in the Code of Conduct around the roles for each stakeholder group to provide opportunities for stakeholders to think about what their actionable responsibilities are associated with their role in implementing and enforcing discipline policies and ensuring that all stakeholders have access to and understand the language in those policies as well. And so developing common definitions for students, depending on where they are developmentally, and also ensuring that students that and families that may not be English speakers may have ADA needs or have students with disabilities, that they know how to access and can understand all of the language and content therein. Moving on to domain three, equity in the educator workforce. School-based staff that participated in stakeholder surveys indicated low levels of agreement with the prompt, district leaders effectively recruit staff of color and district leaders effectively retain staff of color. The district is majority white at all levels of staff with the most significant increase in educators of color taking place during the 2021 school year. Across all stakeholder respondents, there was an average level of 2.16 agreement when asked, district leaders effectively retain staff of color, school-based staff agreed at a level of 2.5, and non-school-based staff agreed at a level of 1.8. And so an overall low-level agreement, not indicating consensus around effectively retaining staff of color. And we also have here, five-year hiring illustration of educators of color in the district. And so one thing to note, again, the most recent year, there was the most significant increase. I'd also call attention to the fact that there are some races and ethnicities that are not represented on the chart at any of the the five-year hiring stands. So thinking about how we can, you know, increase representation across all races and ethnicities. Our first recommendation here is to develop an office of talent management that is led by a senior leader that has experience with talent management strategies addressing recruitment, retention, and the development of talent pipelines to encourage career options and advancement opportunities that are specific to staff of color. We think in this office of talent management, a very, very important piece of that work is going to be creating the conditions for district leaders to reflect on their personal biases and to understand how their personal identity markers and experience could potentially be impacting their hiring practices, decisions, and recruitment and the retention and advancement of staff of color, developing specific district processes and structures to support the active and ongoing recruitment, retention, and advancement of staff of color, considering offering a robust induction programs to support teachers of color in their first years of joining the district, which could look like being matched with a veteran teacher, mentorship, additional coaching or support so that they have the opportunity to grow and feel, you know, seen, valued, and heard here in the district. Building on some of the existing partnerships and recruitment practices by developing meaningful partnerships with historically black colleges and universities and also local minority-serving institutions to actively recruit teachers of color into administrative roles and especially to find candidates that have a commitment to working in hard-to-staff schools. There is research that indicates that teachers that have a track record of working in hard-to-staff schools and have a demonstrated commitment to doing that work, stay in the profession longer, and generally have higher levels of impact across their school communities. And also developing a pipeline that that includes clear opportunities for upward mobility for educators, right? Leadership academies, instructional leadership coaching, and other formal leadership development opportunities. Moving on to domain four, overall themes and findings in professional learning and personal growth. There was a wide array of evidence that there are a variety of optional programming opportunities right now, including color lines, CHAP Equity Fellows, book clubs, and learning teams that are taking place outside of the standard workday. School leaders and school-based staff did report an average level of agreement to having access to professional learning opportunities that deepen their understanding of equity. There are currently limited opportunities for required development within contractual work hours, and there is currently no evidence of sustained professional learning opportunities for clerical staff. Focus group participants did indicate consistent agreement about the importance of creating opportunities for personal and professional growth that are required and accessible for all stakeholders, including parents, staff, and students. So our recommendations here are to develop and implement a plan for district-wide consistently implemented professional learning with a focus on cultural competence for all levels of staff, including district office and staff members. Again, leveraging the district equity team to ensure that they are being developed as facilitators so that they can be trained to provide advanced intensive cultural competence professional learning so that they can deliver professional learning sessions across all stakeholder groups. Again, so leveraging the capacity for us to be able to do this frequently and effectively, partnering with an external organization to develop culturally competent mindsets and practices, ensuring that all aspects of identity are addressed in those professional learning opportunities. And so making sure that we're including race, ethnicity, LGBTQ plus experiences, and other identities are addressed during those sessions. The other thing is developing a multi-year training plan that ensures consistency in professional learning schedules and content for all members within that plan, making sure that we are reviewing the calendars, contract language, and some of the barriers that exist to ensuring that stakeholders are able to participate in those professional learning experiences. And again, ensuring that competencies and educational equity are made an integral part of performance evaluations. Domain five, overall themes and findings, curriculum and instruction and learning. School leaders, students, and family caregiver respondents demonstrated consistently high levels of agreement regarding students' academic needs being met. There is currently evidence that classroom libraries and texts reflect a diverse range of backgrounds and experiences. Teacher-focused group participants did indicate the need for consistent support with facilitating instruction and using those new texts. Student respondents indicated a mean level of agreement of 2.8, which is just slightly below consensus when asked about the opportunity to discuss race, gender identity, disabilities, and other social factors that are relevant in the classroom. And school leaders and school-based staff indicated low levels of agreement when responding to the prompts, do you disaggregate academic discipline attendance and perceptual data for different populations of students? And my colleagues and I use data to identify and address the opportunity and access gaps students face. So regarding students' academic needs being met, across all stakeholder groups, there was an average level of agreement of 3.172, which again indicates consensus across stakeholders, and that was consistent pretty much amongst every stakeholder group survey. Looking at those recommendations, first to develop or expand current curricula and instructional materials in all content areas to prioritize inclusion and equity. Convene the district equity team, CHAP Equity Fellows, and staff developers to identify tools to conduct curriculum and materials reviews to understand where the current gaps in inclusion and equity exist. So making sure that we're monitoring outdated images, ideas, social constructs, you know, language usage to ensure that they're reflective of our current stated commitment and lived commitment to advancing equity. Developing or revising the curriculum based on those findings and working toward ensuring representation of a diversity of perspectives, authors, and characters, a focus on social justice, excuse me, and resources for customizing curriculum to meet students' unique needs and interests, and providing professional learning on an ongoing basis for all levels of staff in the use of new or revised curriculum materials. Our second recommendation here is to establish a district-wide culture of developmental responsiveness, which ensures that practices used by adults respond to students' actual individual cultural and developmental learning needs. So investing in professional development that provides educators with robust support and resources around the use of interactive teaching practices, creating sustaining classrooms environments that represent all students, the use of words and non-linguistic models, and developing connections and authentic relationships with students. As Kate shared, this was a very high-level report. The report that will be published on January 7th is very comprehensive and has, you know, additional data in each of the findings and recommendations components of the report. The final report will be submitted to the district on January 7. We'll be working to present the findings and recommendations to staff on January 11. And we are meeting in January as well with the leadership team to co-create a plan to implement recommendations based on current district priorities and resources. And so we want to make it clear that our recommendations, you're going to be working alongside district leadership to support implementation in a way that's in alignment with, you know, what you already have in place here. And again, some of the assets that were mentioned in our presentation tonight, we are not looking to, you know, totally flip everything upside down. We really want to make sure that this is done collectively and collaboratively in a way that's responsive to the broader community needs.
Thank you, Kia and Kate, for your comprehensive overview and your recommendations. We really appreciate all the hard work you've done in partnership with us over the past months to provide an overview that was very important for us to have as we planned forward. So just in terms of the structure, this is a presentation to the board and an opportunity for the board to ask questions of insight. And so we would welcome that opportunity at this time. And then the discussion that may take place here could potentially inform the report that would be released to the Board of Education from Insight in January, which would ultimately be placed on our website. We'll also be uploading these slides onto our website tomorrow as well. So for our community, you will not have to wait for the video to be published of this meeting. We'll place these on the, on where we upload the video and have the agenda. So, okay.
First of all, thank you. Thank you not only for the presentation tonight, but we've had the opportunity to work with you over the last year now, and it's just been a really positive experience in every way. So thank you so much and for your incredible hard work on this presentation, on the report that we're getting. So one question I have, and I imagine that this actually will be explored in the report, is sort of merging two ideas you put out in 1.1 and then 1.3. And you mentioned that when we're to develop a district equity plan, and you talk about metrics to measure progress towards goals, and also then in 1.3, reviewing data, revealing disproportionalities. And I'm curious, like, what, what would those metrics look like? Can you give an example of sort of what kind of metric would be helpful for the district to use in evaluating whether our work is effective in these areas?
Yes, I'm just trying to get back to the right.
Yeah, no, sorry. I went back like kind of to the beginning, but that really jumped out at me is that obviously, we should use metrics and looking at it, I don't know what those metrics would look like in this context and.
So I can think of one clear example off the top of my head. It was sort of the example that. that I used in looking at the opportunities and access example. So, and I don't know your data by heart right now, but if, you know, if you looked at your overall number of students in the district, your students of color, and disaggregated your student population by race, for example, and then you looked at your numbers of students enrolled in AP, ECE, or your higher-level classes, that would be a way to examine a percentage of disproportionality for students of color who have access to those classes. So that would be something that you could continue to measure across five years, three years, five years, whatever you choose to do, around whether that opportunity for more students to participate in those higher-level classes was improving. And then you could also look at what the district was doing in order to have that happen, right? Are we thinking about ways to examine our own biases? Are we thinking about ways to encourage students who may not feel encouraged to take AP classes, for example, to participate? So that's one clear example I can think of. Kate, you may have another example.
Yeah, I think I'd also think about opportunities for academic enrichment. And so I know that there are academic support or intervention opportunities that are happening outside of the school day. And so juxtaposing the number of students that qualify or eligible for enrichment versus the number of students that are actually able to take advantage of those opportunities due to transportation issues or whatever the case may be. And so thinking about what is our plan to help remove some of those barriers, and are we actually meeting the metrics that we've identified for ourselves year over year?
Thank you.
Thank you for a very comprehensive audit. I think it was a very eye-opening. It showed us a lot of data. I'd like to see some more of the data behind it. You know, we're just seeing the summary charts here. So I'd like, I guess, I'm more of a data guy. I want to take a look at what the data shows. But I think this is a great opportunity for us to continue conversations and open up dialogue on ideas, how we can move forward and continue this very important work for the district. So thank you very much for starting us on the process.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
I also just would like to say thank you. I know that there's been a lot, a lot of work that everybody had to do behind the scenes. And although this is a very high-level report that we're getting right now, that there, as we will see in the comprehensive report, that it is very dense, and it's a lot, and it's a lot to work through. But I appreciate all the findings, and I appreciate all the recommendations, and I look forward to working through all of them with everybody here.
Thank you.
I want to thank you because I know we obviously met at our summer retreat when this started, when we started working with you this past summer. We know the work that's gone into this, and it is very much appreciative. I do think that you got to see a wide variety of stakeholders here, and the information is incredibly helpful for us. I too look forward to the final report so we could look at some of the data and get a little more granular to really understand the areas that need our attention. And I know that there's been tremendous amount of attention with this administration, and there's been a lot of work that's done. So we're going to continue that work. And my question is a little bit along the lines of Hillary, that when we get the final report, and I don't know how it has typically worked in other districts, when you make recommendations like here, will it also give us kind of metrics like timeframes or expectations, and when we should see movement, and how to gauge that movement, you know? Because I know it's a lot of work to do these surveys now, and to talk to all the stakeholders, do these surveys, and then come up with where we need to go. But trying to do an assessment on our progress, I would think is challenging, but there obviously that needs to be done to make sure that we are moving in the right direction. So I don't know how, whether there's a backend to that, and when we should expect that to be looked at.
Yes. And so we're actually in the process now of scheduling a meeting to close the door and then do some of the really hard work around the implementation planning. And so those implementation plans would clearly define timelines, who's responsible for which aspects of the work, what are the, you know, critical tasks necessary to bring some of the identified goals to fruition, who's responsible for those tasks. So that would really be where the how, right? That would be, that's co-created with the district because we really want to make sure that we don't tell you all how to do things in a way that doesn't align with how you're structured or the resources that you have available to you. So-
You want to set us up to succeed and be able to implement all of this, right?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much, and thanks for all your hard work. It's much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you so very much. I appreciated meeting you over the summer where you started a lot of hard work. So it's been a while, but this is, as you might have heard, this is my last board meeting. So I just feel the need to say that this is included in the most important work that the school district is doing. I can't think of anything more important than this. And I view this work as something that, you know, although you're here as consultants, you're not, you know, permanent staff, but this is work that needs to be just ongoing. It's just part of our curriculum. It's not that we're doing this now as a project that will end. I just see this as continuous, as an integral part of what we continue working on in the future. So I have a few questions specifically on what you presented tonight. I know that there's going to be something a lot more detailed, but I was curious. So you showed that there's a need for a definition of equity that is widely known and understood. And from the interviews we had, I, you know, I agree with that. And I know that we use the definition that's been established by the New York State Education Department. But so I'm wondering if what you're finding is that there's not, that that's not widely known, or is it your impression that we need to tweak that definition from the State Ed Department? Or what's your opinion of their definition that we're using?
So the respondents indicated a lack of understanding around what that definition is. And so I think, yes, first is working to make sure that it's developed. One of the things that we found in our work with districts as well is that a lot of state, you know, departments of education have definitions for equity, but kind of taking that to make it the district's own. And so I think that when we think about what equity looks like here in Chappaqua, that may differ from the language that is written in the state level or the district, the DOE's definition. And so making sure that, one, the constituents and stakeholders in this community have an opportunity to provide input on the development of that definition, right? And so that that body, that district equity team that we described, is helping to generate that definition so that it's reflective of the experiences, the needs, the goals of the people here. And so, and then that they're also helping to do the work to make sure that it's widely known, and everyone understands this is what, this is a definition. But more so than just knowing the definition, what does it look like? What does it sound like? What does it feel like when we're in classrooms, when we're in hallways, when we're sitting together as a leadership team, when we're coming together as a learning support team, right? And so that we move beyond just kind of knowing a definition, that we have a definition, it's clearly known by everyone, and it's also lived and breathed in our actions and everything that we do and embedded in our work across the district.
Yeah, thank you for that. So it becomes our own definition, and that becomes more meaningful than something you have to remember. So yeah, I really like, that really speaks to me, and I'm sure to all of us. There was another slide that showed a sense of belonging in the findings there, and you specifically pointed to gender disparities and gender identity disparities with respect to the LGBTQ+ community. I was, it's very important to know. And I was also interested there, was there a disaggregation of racial groups in that?
So there was, but for looking at students of color, the N numbers were actually, they were under the threshold, which actually gets reported out in the system that our analysts use to analyze that data. So there's an N number that needs to be able to be present in order to look at just survey respondents.
So we don't know right now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay, those are just initial questions right now. Really look forward to, even though I won't be on the school board, but I really look forward to reading your report. And thank you so much again for helping us to do this important work.
Thank you.
So I always think it's important just to kind of help everyone understand how we're going to move forward, because we really need to get organized around the data that you're presenting us. So our plan is to receive the report, make sure that our staff fully throughout the district have an understanding of that, and then to plan forward. So I would anticipate either at the second meeting in January or the first meeting in February, I will come back and update you on where we are with our process in terms of looking at the recommendations, working with Insight, and how we plan to move forward with some of the recommendations at that time. Are there things that we're going to do immediately? Are there things that need to be longer range? But right now, we don't have the full analysis in front of us to be able to begin planning in that way. So I just wanted to update the community that second weekend January or the first meeting in February, I'll be coming back and talking about, okay, now what are we going to do? What are our next steps here?
Okay.
Okay? And I also, I want to thank Tony and Philip and Tanuke. They did a lot of work to help facilitate the partnership with Insight. It was a lot. So I just want to give them applause. Thank you so much for helping. So, okay. So thank you very much. Thank you for joining us. We look forward to seeing you, and have a good holiday. Okay, and that's the end of those superintendent's reports. So thank you, everybody.
Is that still where we were? Okay. So that brings us now to committee reports. I have nothing to report.
Policy Committee met this past week.
Oh, that's true. The Policy Committee did meet. Do you want to take it?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the Policy Committee met, and we actually have two policies on our agenda tonight. The first, we actually, three, two of which we worked on in the last meeting. One is the second reading and adoption of 9070, which we'll get to when we get there. We also worked on 5028, which is just to ensure that all of our students who are eligible for free or reduced lunch have access to breakfast, and we'll describe that in more detail when we get there. And then a policy related to health insurance, which again, I think it probably makes more sense to describe when we get there. So that's where we're at with policy.
We had Health and Safety on Monday. We had a meeting that Andrew let us in, which has been great, and they've been really informative and very efficient. So I'll just give a summary. Vicky and I are on that committee, and Andrew can jump in too. But we went through, as it is, it's Health and Safety. So Andrew reviewed for everyone about where we are with COVID and vaccines, tests to stay, our vaccine clinic, et cetera, for tomorrow, and informed everybody where we are in terms of that and where our numbers are, which are quite good in terms of vaccination rates. And then we talked about some safety items, which I know were already discussed, the emergency repairs that were done, the gym floor, the auditorium ceiling. We also had, you know, some sewer and watering issues. And, you know, personally, I know Vicky and I feel the same way. The work that's been done has been incredible. These things crop up unexpectedly, of course, and the fact that they were able to make the repairs, some of which were due to Hurricane Ida, especially, you know, the gym floor, the auditorium ceiling on Greeley, which hopefully, I mean, we are planning to be back there. It's all fixed up in January. And then we always have emergency repairs that have to be done, but we have an incredible crew and staff, and everything gets taken care of in this district, and we're incredibly grateful for it. So thank you very much for that. And then we talked about some other matters. We have an insurance risk inspection coming up and fire inspection, and we also talked about trying to schedule some possible dates for walkthroughs of our buildings, which we had postponed last year because of COVID, but we're hoping to do in person and do some walkthroughs, which is typical of what we do. And there are also some, going to be some policy changes just to sort of clean up our policy related to the establishment of the Health and Safety Committee, but that hasn't been done yet. It has to go through the Policy Committee, so we'll be back on that. And if there's anything else you wish to add?
Yeah, I'm just checking my notes. I think you covered everything. Did you mention the building walkthrough?
Yeah. Right, that we're trying to schedule.
Yeah, the emergency repairs.
And there also was discussion, obviously, in light of recent very unfortunate school shootings, and how we make sure that all of our staff and everyone in this district that is in charge of our schools and our students know what the procedures and protocols are to keep our students as safe as possible. And Andrew talked about how we're going to be reviewing that. But we are very comfortable with what is put in place here, but we can, we always strive towards a greater level of safety. And we discussed how we can make sure that everyone is on board, making sure that procedure is followed under all circumstances. So that was really helpful as well.
Yeah, thank you, Jane. That was very thorough. That's what I have too. I don't think I have anything else to add.
All right.
We had a facilities committee meeting last week, and a full committee where we had our advisory group with us. We discussed a lot of the issues that we've had in the past month and a half, the incredible work that Andrew and Joe and their teams have done with our contractors to get the auditorium, Greeley, put back together the broken pipes, and hopefully we'll be in Greeley in January where we can be back at our home, our home for board meetings, not our home. But we also discussed, again, the walkthrough with the board. We have to walk through the buildings, you know, annually to take a look at that. But we want to try and schedule a walkthrough with the facilities committee. So some of the new people on the committee have not had the opportunity to look at all the buildings and see all the amazing work that's been done and see all the repairs that we've been doing. So work on that. And I guess that's about it for now. That's the biggest update. Did I miss anything, Andrew? Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. That brings us to the public comment period. We welcome public comments. In respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding the comments presented. So if you'd like to speak, please come on down.
Hi, my name is Scotty Gurney. I came tonight to bring attention and awareness to the changing freshman English curriculum at Greeley. I have three children in the school, a third grader at Grafflin, a seventh grader at Bell, and a ninth grader at Greeley. I have several concerns, many of which I've spoken to a couple of you about already. There's a newly required book this year for freshman English called, "This Book is Anti-Racist." This text explicitly states that the dominant culture is male, white, Christian, and upper class, and that group controls most of our society's institutions. And then all others are part of a subordinate culture. According to this text, those in the dominant culture are considered privileged and have more power and agency than others based on those factors. In my opinion, this overly simplistic view of the world is stifling critical thinking, it's greatly reducing academic rigor, and it's silencing many students. In any English class, I want my children deeply analyzing literature, participating in thought-provoking discussions, and honing their skills as writers. This text doesn't push them to think critically or analyze anything. Instead, it's presenting a very specific view of the world and telling them what their place is in it. I'm very concerned that my sons or my daughter is going to read something like this and then feel stuck in a predetermined category based on something that they can't control, such as race and gender. As we all know, there's so many different ways to view and study and understand race in America, and it's so important to do in our schools. But to take this very complex and sensitive issue and reduce it to a singular perspective does a disservice to our children. Whether or not we see the world in the way this book describes or not is not my point. My point is that we want to encourage our children to analyze, question, and dig into texts, not have a specific perspective just given to them. Our world right now is so divisive, and many, both children and adults, are nervous to speak. I'm nervous to speak right now, in case you didn't notice. And they're nervous to question anything. So civil debate having nearly vanished, shouting is way more commonplace, these fears of being labeled and canceled, they exist everywhere, in our town, in our schools. And the tolerance that we want to achieve, it can't happen when there's only one right answer and one viewpoint. So even think about how many times you, as adults, have internally debated whether you share an opinion and then stopped, edited yourself for fear of being labeled or even canceled. Then think of our 14- and 15-year-olds in a classroom reading this text. How can we expect them to question it and gain a deeper understanding of anything if we set it up like this?
Yes. Oh, can I have one more sentence?
Is that okay? To just finish?
Well, I think we have to-
Okay.
Grant her an extra minute.
It's not even a minute, just one sentence. Okay. Thank you.
Can we have, I'll move to extend the speaker's time by one minute?
Second. Second.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. We are silencing those who see the world differently, and we're doing this in English. The course intended to deepen their writing, their reading, their speaking, and their analytical skills. Please carefully look at these texts and reconsider their use. Thank you very much for letting me finish.
My name is Christine Gabbard, and my daughter is a student at Bell Middle School. We moved here a few years ago because of the reputation of the school district. We were very excited for our daughter to attend. Our experience at Bell has been one of many, many substitute teachers. We expected highly qualified teachers. We expected consistency and rigor. And what happens is a lot of teacher absenteeism and substitutes. And three things happen when the substitutes are in the classroom. One, the kids get packets and they teach each other and themselves. Two, they go on the computer and view videos and teach themselves. Or three, they have a free period during which many behavior problems arise. So, here's my question. I actually have three questions. One, do you think that academic instruction can be sound when teachers are absent for 10% or more of instructional days? Two, have you considered negotiating financial incentives for teachers to not take their many personal and sick days? And three, if there are no financial incentives and teachers are taking off up to 10% of instructional time, what backup do we have for our kids? These core academic areas need consistent, solid, highly certified teachers for our kids to be competitive and to just understand the material. Thank you.
Is it okay, can I start?
Good evening. My name is Stacy Morgan. I have a question and a recommendation. Can you, as a board, please clarify the following expenses listed as 5.6, order 202135 for $15,750 related to CUDI and FEDER, 5.7, which is order 211064 for $8,547.30 retainer agreement, CUDI and FEDER again, 5.8, order 202136 for $15,000 increase cost to WSP. I would like to make a recommendation in the future. Can you please provide links to specific programs, projects, transactions on a detailed public website with acronyms spelled out, contract information, contact information, and financial spreadsheets? It would be very helpful to be transparent, especially to new families, why and where these and future monies go. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Nadia Nabeel. I just had a quick question slash comment. When I was watching the presentation, I was just, there was a lot of discussion about race, and I was just wondering if there's been any discussion of socioeconomic variation and differences, and if that's kind of come up in some of your discussion with race and equity? Because I would assume that, especially in Chappaqua and in our current environment, socioeconomic would have equal, if not even more, of an impact than race, and if that's being addressed or not. And I was just wondering, especially with the consultant's report. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vishali Baticharya. I'm a parent in the district. I have two daughters. One graduated in 2020, and my younger one is a senior. I'm also the chair of the Committee on Diversity, Race, and Belonging.
Excuse me, can you speak into a microphone a little better?
Sure.
It's difficult to hear you so.
It's hard to hear you.
Kissing it, but.
Might be my old ears, but.
Yeah, it's the mask, too. I'm also the chair of the Committee on Diversity, Race, and Belonging in our district. I'm speaking to you as a parent and a community member as well. I wish Kia and Kate were here, but I wanted to thank you for bringing them into our district to audit our district. And their presentation, many of the points in their presentation resonated with me as a parent. There's been a letter that's circulated amongst the parents, and there are so many similar themes in this report and in this group letter from interested parents. We ask for Lisa to submit this letter into record and hope that the consultants and the board get a chance to read it. I'd also like to, on a personal note, acknowledge the amazing work that's been done by the district as a whole over the past couple of years. I truly believe that we're all better off for it. Our community can only benefit from continued focus on empathy, acceptance, and respect. In that regard, we should encourage ongoing engagement at home, in the classrooms, and in the community, so that we may hopefully reduce incidence of inequities experienced by students and families, thereby fostering a sense of belonging. As a district, we must be committed to identifying and celebrating our differences for the well-being of our students today and for future generations. I'm optimistic of our journey ahead and look forward to doing my part. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm just handing the letter over to Vishali.
One of these days, I'll get this right. Are there any other public comments? Okay, just, the board want to comment on any of the?
Maybe, maybe I could. So, I just want to clarify the questions regarding the agenda are related to the Zoder property approval process. So, they are contracts with an attorney and with WSP, who is spearheading the DEP approval for the district. I know we've had comments tonight with concerns regarding the curriculum and with substitutes. I would strongly encourage our parents to contact their building principals directly to talk to them about the concerns that they're having regarding their children's experiences in our classrooms. That may have already occurred, but I do want to remind our, our community that our principals are always available to talk with them about concerns that they have at the building level that their children are experiencing. Thank you.
Okay. Is everybody good? Does anybody need a break?
No.
Okay. Okay, so that brings us to approvals and ratifications. Can I have a motion, please, for items 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3, which are accepting the minutes of the November 17th, November 22nd, and December 10th board meetings, respectively?
I will move items 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3.
I'll second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oops. Okay, that brings us to 3.4, which is Policy 9070, recording workplace conversations. This is a second reading and adoption. Does anybody have any questions about? Yes. Yes. I will move item 3.4.
Okay, I'll second.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just did it. Maybe I can just read it because it's very short.
Sure.
All right. So, recording workplace conversations, Policy 9070, tape, digital, and video recordings will not be made by employees in administrative meetings with supervisors without two-party consent. A violation of the policy may give rise to disciplinary proceedings against the offending employee or supervisor. We didn't receive any feedback to change any of the language from our last meeting when we presented it.
Yeah, and we discussed the rationale the last time. But if anybody has any questions, just let me know. All in favor?
Okay, so, do you want me to go with 3.5, since it's just a first reading?
Sure.
Okay. So, with 3.5, we run into a situation where when you have.
We need to have a motion.
Oh, sorry. For the first reading.
We need to do that. Oh, I'll move item 3.5.
I'll second.
Okay, sorry about that.
All right, so when we are working with some of our families, we don't have enough families who indicated they were in need of free breakfast for their children to trigger the process by which we can apply to have a free breakfast program here, as we have for free and reduced lunch students. But nonetheless, we have some students whom we need to provide breakfast for. So, what we talked about in the policy committee was simply adding a sentence to Policy 5028 that states, "In order to support the nutritional and academic needs of students, school buildings that do not otherwise operate a breakfast program may provide prepackaged healthy."
It should be healthy.
Healthy breakfast items to students who qualify for free or reduced-priced lunches. So, what we'd like you to consider, this is just the first reading, is the ability to give us policy language to allow the district to provide breakfast for students who need it. Right now, the principals are doing it at their own expense. So, could I ask you something? Before COVID, had you seen similar language? I'm just, I just have a question regarding the word "prepackaged."
Oh, go ahead.
Because obviously, that's the right thing to do now. But I'm wondering if, when we reach, you know, get beyond COVID, if that's the best and healthiest way to provide these meals? And maybe it is, but in case it isn't, do we want to have a policy that's a little more broad?
Andrew?
So, "prepackaged" wasn't necessarily meaning poor quality. I think "prepackaged" could include something that's prepared at Greeley and brought to the elementary buildings, for example, on a daily basis. It could be fresh, but the intention was we're not going to be preparing meals at the buildings because we won't have staff there to do that. So, it could be prepackaged fruits and vegetables. It could be, you know, cereals. It could be that sort of thing.
Okay, I understand. So, it goes beyond COVID protocols?
Yeah, this was just more to make it feasible from an implementation perspective.
Okay. And anyway, policies can be changed to meet current situations. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's the only adjustment on that. So, if you have any language that you'd like the policy committee to consider before our next meeting, can you, if you could email it to Hillary Warren and I, we appreciate it.
Okay, maybe we can change it to like "prepared" or something like that. Or you could change that wording if it seems like it's not the correct wording for what we're actually providing, which is that we're providing, it's just that they're not being, there's not a served meal kind of thing.
Right, okay.
So, we'll take a look.
Okay, and because it's just the first reading.
That's it.
That's it.
Yeah, then we're going to move the next one.
So, then I will move item 3.6, which is Policy 9027, which, this is a first reading of a health insurance policy.
All right, so basically, on this policy, you'll see some clarifying language.
We need a second.
Oh, sorry, gosh.
I'll second.
Okay, here we go.
So, on this policy, 9027, we just add some clarifying language. First of all, we didn't have two-person coverage in there, which we needed. And then we also wanted to make it very clear that employees only could access coverage during the period of active employment with the district, so they wouldn't try to access this in retirement. And that's basically it. Okay?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I'll move 4.1 instructional.
I'll second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of 4.1?
Aye.
All right, so we had a number of people receive tenure tonight. We'll honor them in our ceremony in May. So, congratulations to them, and we'll do you justice later on in the school year, so.
Congratulations.
I won't be here, so I want to say congratulations.
All right, and congratulations to our retirees. We will honor our retirees in June. And this is, this is, this meeting and our next meeting, we have a stipend notification clause in our contract, so we would, we typically have larger numbers now and in January. The deadline for notification is actually, is the 15th, it's today. So, anything that came in after the agenda was published, we'd be adding in a later agenda. And then now I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.2.
I will second that. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that brings us to five, which is our consent agenda. The use of a consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It is recommended that we approve the following consent agenda, but let me ask, are there any items on this consent agenda that anybody would like to remove for separate discussion or vote?
No.
No? Then, as I said, this is a relatively routine list of contracts, CSE summaries, the grants that were referenced during the superintendent's report. I'd like to thank the Grafflin PE department for probably staving off any snow this winter by requesting the snow shoes. If their shopping habits are anything like mine, we won't have a lot of snow days. So, I will move the consent agenda, which is items 5.1 through 5.22.
I will second that.
Questions, discussions, anything we want to highlight?
No, I just want to thank the sports boosters and the Chappaqua School Foundation for, as usual, very, very generous grants. So, thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item six has two contracts that have been approved by the superintendent per board policy 6085 that require our acknowledgment. So, these are both proposals for TC merit for engineering plans. So, can I have a motion, please, for 6.1 and 6.2?
I'll move 6.1 and 6.2.
I'll second. I'll second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item seven is facilities. This is a change order. I will move 7.1, which is the change order.
I will second 7.1.
Any questions or conversations? This relates to the Sustainability Research Center. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Acknowledging, right?
Yep. We are acknowledging that change order. And item eight brings us to the financials, where we are, items 8.1 is acknowledging receipt of the Claims Auditor Report for October of '21. 8.2 is acknowledging the receipt of the Claims Auditor Report for November of '21. 8.3 is acknowledging the receipt of the Treasurers Report of November '21. 8.4 is acknowledging the receipt of the Revenue Status Report for November of '21. And 8.5 is acknowledging receipt of the Appropriations Status Report for November '21. So, can I have a motion, please, for 8.1 through 8.5?
I'll move.
I'll second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to our notice of future meetings. This is it for 2021.
I was smiling. Smiling after that math.
Our next meeting is Wednesday, January 12th, 2022. Sounds weird to say. At 7:30 PM, it will be the budget preview, and we anticipate being back in the Greeley auditorium. And after that, Wednesday, January 26th, also at 7:30, also in the Greeley auditorium. Before we adjourn, I just want to wish everybody a happy, healthy, safe holiday break and a wonderful start to 2022, when hopefully we see all of your smiling faces at some point. And Vicky, once again, thank you. And we'll miss you. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please, at 10:05 PM?
I think Vicky needs to adjourn this meeting.
Okay, I will, I move to adjourn our meeting. And I will miss you, too.
I will second that.
All in favor, please say aye. You're adjourned.